All right, if everyone is ready, I will go ahead and call January 13th. All right, if everyone is ready, I will go ahead and call January 13th. Business meeting to order. Ms. Widener?
Dr. Campley? Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Leggett?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Dr. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Saylor? Dr. Weston?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here. 1.03 and 1.04, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
Pledge of Allegiance to you high, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McKinney, would you read the mission statement for us today?
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Mr. McKinney, thank you so much. 1.06, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. 1.07, approval of the minutes. This is a request to approve the minutes from last month's December 9th meeting. Can I have a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Motion and a second. Any conversation? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? And motion passes. So we will move on to 1.08, which is our special recognition, a very exciting special recognition for this evening. Dr. Russell.
Well, good evening, everyone. And this evening, we have several recognitions to share and celebrate. We're going to begin with celebrating excellence in education. We have Mr. Kevin Tomlinson here, along with a former student, Hayden Jones, and they will both be recognized. If I could ask both of you to come up, that would be great. So, we had a very exciting month of December. The Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year Program honors excellence in teaching by recognizing outstanding pre-K-12 educators in public education who have made significant contributions to the academic and personal growth of Pennsylvania's school-aged children. It's a very prestigious competition and award that celebrates teachers who inspire students, collaborate with parents and colleagues, and actively engage in their school communities. The recipient of the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year title serves a two-year term and takes on several important responsibilities. They end up actually representing the state in lots of activities with other educators. They participate in workshops, they facilitate some of those, engage with other colleagues, participate in media interviews, and they really make their rounds and connect with lots of educators in the state. Elementary and secondary teachers are eligible for this award. This year, Mr. Kevin Tomlinson, a fourth-grade teacher at Evergreen Elementary, was nominated by two members of our school community. And from the many nominations received, Mr. Tomlinson was one of 12 finalists. He was selected to participate in interviews, to submit a recorded teaching episode showcasing effective instructional strategies. It was not easy to get to where he got in December of this year. Mr. Marsh, Mr. Ryan Marsh, the principal at Evergreen Elementary and I, went out to Hershey and participated in the ceremony with Mr. Tomlinson and with Hayden. And it was, it was really a wonderful ceremony, but it was not easy to get there. The finalists were honored at the Pennsylvania Department of Ed's Annual SAS Institute. So there was a conference happening in Hershey at the time, the SAS Institute, where they eventually announced the Teacher of the Year. So Mr. Tomlinson was recognized as one of 12 finalists at that ceremony. He didn't win, but he's the winner in our minds, for sure. It actually was a teacher from Haviford Township School District, so close by to us, that we had the opportunity to engage with. So that was nice. We would have preferred it to be Mr. Tomlinson, but it was nice that it was someone local. But again, Mr. Tomlinson, you should be very proud that you made it to the final 12. Hayden Jones is a sixth grader at East, and she is a former student of Mr. Tomlinson. So not only did Mr. Tomlinson have to do a lot of work to actually, once he was named a finalist, to continue to that ceremony, he had to speak at the conference. Hayden did too, and it wasn't easy. So each of these 12 finalists invited a student that they had crossed paths with in their career, and Hayden offered some really nice words on behalf of Mr. Tomlinson, and it was really a wonderful ceremony. I can't stress that enough. I'm very appreciative that Mr. Marsh and I were both able to go. It was very nice. So I described Hayden's message as heartfelt on behalf of Mr. Tomlinson, and it really just made the moment more special. So the Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year Program is affiliated with the national initiative sponsored by the Council of Chief State School Officers. It's a national program, and it's one of the most prestigious teacher recognition initiatives in the country, offering state teachers of the year a year-long professional learning and development experience to enhance their leadership skills and celebrate their contributions to education. I would like to commend Mr. Tomlinson and to the board ask you to recognize and commend him as well for his remarkable achievements and dedication. We're very proud to celebrate his recognition as a finalist, and I'm pleased to do that here in front of our board as well. So once again, congratulations. And Hayden, thank you again. That's great. Hold on. No, no. Hold on. Yeah, so, so we give a couple of little things here when we recognize individuals, when the board recognizes, myself included. The cookies tend to be pretty popular. They're PV cookies. They've got a little Viking and some sweet icing on them. And then we also have for you a certificate. So typically, when our board recognizes individuals, there's a certificate that comes with that. So Hayden, here's a certificate for you, and thank you for Mr. Tomlinson. Here's a certificate for you. And you can't leave yet because we're going to get a picture in a few minutes, okay? That'd be great. But thank you again for coming, and congratulations to both of you. Wonderful. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm up here solo this evening because part of my purpose here tonight is to recognize the Board of School Directors. January is School Board Recognition Month. And as part of this month, the Perkyomen Valley School District Administration, we have a couple of additional administrators here this evening and some teaching staff, would like to recognize the contributions of the school board. The nine individuals serving on the Board of School Directors volunteer their time as a governing body, providing oversight to the operations of the school district. We, I in particular, sincerely thank all of you, recognizing that you invest a lot of hours attending these meetings, reading whatever I send to you and whatever else you need to research. But I recognize, and those working closely with us, recognize how much time is necessary to do this, and it's not easy work these days. That's also recognized. The decisions school boards have faced in recent months are some of the most challenging. Thank you for your time, your dedication, and your commitment to the Perkyomen Valley School District in this capacity. Thank you. And the bag, the gym bag that's there, if you want to grab it, I will call out to you in that gym bag. So that's a gift for you as board members for your service this, this year, as part of January School Board Recognition. There is an adorable little wooden, well, there's a cookie. The cookie's there. You get a cookie. You get a cookie. They're, they're very popular. And there's a little wooden snowman that was made by our students out at West. Yes, so we had a group of students that were making these. You'll see the name of the teacher on the back. A teacher was making these, and teachers and staff members could purchase, and they made some for our nine board members. So, thank you. Enjoy that. Yes, okay. One more, and then we're done. Lastly, I would like to recognize two of our board members for their years of service. So PSBA's honor roll of school board service, so that, this takes us beyond Board Recognition Month, celebrates school board directors for long-term service and recognizes their dedication to the local districts and communities. Bestowing a certificate represents our appreciation for their work and their steadfast commitment to their students. So, PSBA is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. It's a state-level organization that provides a lot of guidance and support to school districts and school boards. And they recognize individuals who have invested several years. So this evening, we have two honor roll recipients for five years of service on the board. And the first is Dr. Wade Weston.
Again, thank you for your service.
Again, thank you for your service. And the second one this evening is Ms. Laura White.
And the second one this evening is Ms. Laura White.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very much appreciate all that you do. Very much appreciate all that you do. It would be wonderful if we can get a picture with Mr. Tomlinson and Hayden. It would be wonderful if we can get a picture with Mr. Tomlinson and Hayden. If Ms. White, you're okay to take a five-minute break? If Ms. White, you're okay to take a five-minute break?
Yep. Yep.
We'll post those on social media and then move on. We'll post those on social media and then move on.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I know sometimes the whole board doesn't come out, but if we could have the And I know sometimes the whole board doesn't come out, but if we could have the whole board for the picture with Mr. Tomlinson, that would be wonderful. whole board for the picture with Mr. Tomlinson, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Oh, well, I guess I didn't need to. Oh, well, I guess I didn't need to.
All right, with that excitement behind us, we will move on to 1.09, comments on any topic. I will ask, I don't know if everybody has signed in, but there actually is a computer up front for those from the public that are attending our meeting tonight to sign in, just so we have record of your attendance. And I will note that the board affords members of the community and the Perkomen Valley public three minutes to speak on any topic of their choosing. Dr. Russell will pull up a timer should we need it, and I will open the floor. Bless you. All right, seeing no, I'm so sorry, yes. You just state your name and municipality, and then you will have a floor.
Hello, Tim Jagger, Lower Frederick. I just wanted to bring up with recent things going on, I believe it's time we should open the door again to policy 720 being brought back into place with the Biden administration withdrawing several of his proposed regulations and federal judges striking down many regulations. The board last year, you know, decided to retire the policy. That was the five of you, which had the majority, even though majority of the community members that came out and spoke were in favor of policy 720. The kids walked out in favor of policy 720. So I believe the way the country is going right now, it's time to start opening that door again, have talks about policy 720 being reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, we will move along to section two, reports and presentations, student liaisons report. Ms. Tremba and Mr. Lees are not able to attend tonight, but Ms. Tremba did send on some information that I will share on her behalf. And she starts off, unfortunately Conrad and I could not attend this evening, but we have a few short announcements that we'd like to share with the public. First, our high school music department held their fifth annual cabaret this weekend in celebration of their senior choir members. I know that Dr. Campley's daughter was part of that. Congratulations to all the seniors who performed, and I thank you for sharing your talents with our community. We'd also like to extend our congratulations to Coach John Russo, who earned his 100th win with the girls' basketball program this past weekend. Coach Russo is an extremely committed coach, and this is visible through the accomplishments of his team. And finally, with MLK Day approaching, we would like to encourage our students and families to take advantage of the multitude of service opportunities made available by the district. This is a great opportunity to give back to the community and honor Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy. Thank you, Claire Tremba. So I appreciate that Claire sent that on ahead of the meeting. And that moves into the president's report. I will echo Claire's comments, and also just point out that if you cannot attend one of the onsite community events for the Martin Luther King Day of Service that the district hosts, there are some take-home activities. I don't know, Dr. Sadler, if you'd like to elaborate at all on any of that, based on your work with that committee. Not this year so much, okay, no worries. But I did see on Facebook earlier that there are some take-home activities that are age-appropriate, should you want to reach out via that avenue to sign up. And with that, 2.03 is the superintendent's report. Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Ms. White. I'm actually going to stand at the podium, and we have a team of administrators here. I'm going to ask them to stand with me. Thank you. So this evening's superintendent's report will bring to you some conversations that have been having, that have been occurring or held among a small administrative task force. And as a board, you have been made aware of some of what those conversations have sounded like. This is a portion of our task force here this evening, and I felt it was time to bring this conversation forward to you. So this is really the agenda for this evening and the categories or topics that we will touch upon. Our district mission statement continues to guide us, as do our shared beliefs, and ultimately, it's students that we keep at the center of our thinking. So these conversations continue to really focus on what's best for our students, what's best for kids. So here are the questions for you to think about as we embark upon this presentation. Are you, as a board, interested in continuing the conversations and extending them to stakeholder groups? So after you hear this presentation this evening, should we, as a group, continue this work? And if so, what additional information would you like to have? What would be helpful? So why a facilities task force? Why was this task force formed? Well, several years ago, as we initiated conversations about full-day kindergarten, there was the concern or the wondering if we would get an influx of kindergarten students. We know we have private school kindergartens here in the area. We know that some parents have shared with us, they prefer full day. We wondered if we would see a large increase, and we're starting to concern ourselves with space in the elementary schools, because not only were we shifting to full-day kindergarten, but the needs of our students are becoming more diverse and classrooms more specialized in some of our buildings, to the point where they don't have empty classrooms right now for next year. They're going to have to, they're going to have to make an adjustment, put a special area on a cart. But because of how the diverse needs of our students have grown, and the resources that come with what our students need and what we want to provide, we're using our buildings differently today than we did in the past. And because of that, you may hear from principals tonight, they are actually tight on classroom space if they needed another third-grade classroom next year or kindergarten classroom. So we started to talk about facilities last summer, as both of these issues emerged. And they focused on our current building utilization and the potential for expanding capacity. So how can we most effectively meet the needs of our students and be as resourceful with district resources? Those were some of the overarching questions that we continued to come back to. One proposal that we've come to is to consider realigning grade levels, so that we free up space in some of our buildings, and we are more resourceful with other buildings, as well as, we believe, offer more effective and efficient programming. So this is the administrative task force in full this evening. You'll see these individuals here tonight. And they're not necessarily going to have a speaking part, but they are here if there's an inroad and an appropriate comment that they'd like to share, based on some of what they bring to these conversations. I've invited them to do that. If you have specific questions, for example, of principals, I invite you to pose those to our principals that are here. So as the task force conversations, just to get a little bit further into some of the details, as these continued, we really began to prioritize. So I want to be really clear, and I've shared this with some of the parents I've met with, we didn't jump to a solution. We need a 5-6 building and a 7-8 building. We didn't do that. We need a primary center. We didn't do that either. But we came back to what's happening with our students? What do our students need? And how might we most effectively meet their needs? And we had to consider what was available to do that. So to offer efficient and effective programs and services, we need to consider what's happening in our buildings. I've mentioned kindergarten. We have more classes of kindergarten than we've had in the past. Each building has four classes of our youngest learners. We're seeing different academic, social, and emotional student needs. I mentioned the diverse needs growing in each of our buildings. With that comes a variety of resources, some of them human, and they require space. Some of the ways that we differentiate and personalize learning for students also demand space, space in ways that we haven't necessarily needed it in the past. Additionally, as we think about what could we do for our students, well, can we target resources more effectively? Can we facilitate teacher collaboration? That is definitely an appeal to bringing all teachers of one grade level together. Can we specialize programming and target it specifically to a particular age group? Can we support transitions? As we think about combining fifth and sixth graders, we see them as developmentally pretty close. And the opportunity to target their needs more effectively, to standardize instruction, to be consistent and collaborative about the teaching and learning that occurs, are things that stand out as advantages. We also have considered class sizes. We know that we, as a district, have, for a very long time, promoted lower class sizes, or class sizes on the lower end of that range in our policy. Our principals, our teachers, also very much appreciate that. Our students benefit. Equity and opportunity. If we have grade levels together, there is appeal, because we believe we can more effectively offer equity of opportunity. And then for seventh and eighth graders, as now, as it is the case now, when they need access to the high school, we provide it. If they're at West, they travel down. If they're here at East, they can walk over or take a bus over. But again, that's a consideration for us as we think about this grade level realignment, to be able to do these things in the interest of our students. There is certainly a question about transitions. Well, you're adding another transition to our students as they progress through grades K through 12. And traditionally, that's been something we've tried to avoid. That hasn't always been a good thing or viewed as a good thing. However, this team believes that we can overcome the challenges that many of our students face, transitioning them to a 5-6 center, in comparison maybe to a 6-8 building, and that the positives that could result from that arrangement, the opportunities for our students outweigh some of what we would need to overcome with the transition. We continue to focus on transitions for our students, and for most, we get it right. They do well, but for some, we don't. We know we need to continue to work on that. It continues to be a focus, from fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth, 12th to the world. So we believe that placing fifth and sixth graders together could actually allow for a smoother transition. Bringing those grades together has its advantages as well. Grouping students in seventh and eighth grade together, we believe affords an opportunity to focus on preparing them for high school, again, very targeted, with intentional interventions, resources, practices, strategies. So a note about transitions, somebody asked a really good question, what happens now, as our students currently in our system transition from fifth to sixth? Evergreen divides about 70/30, Skipback divides almost 50/50. All of Schwanxville goes to West, all of South goes to East, and this has also been something brought to my attention. Our families, our students struggle with this a little bit. So another advantage that we'll call out in this grade level alignment, we'd like to talk more about with you, is that all students would be together. And that, we believe, provides them an opportunity to build relationships, to get to know one another, before they transition on in the grades to higher grades. These data, these percentages are based upon fifth-grade classes and their transitions for the past four years, including this year. And just another note that I've incorporated here, it certainly is worthy of more conversation, but the furthest southern point in the South attendance area is 10.69 miles from West. The furthest southern or west point in Skipback is 9.66 miles from West. So they're about a mile different in terms of their distance. And yes, that's far, and we need to think about and talk about transportation if these conversations are going to continue. But the dividing of our students now raises questions, creates some concerns. We get past it, but it is something. And then that transportation piece, and avoiding our students being on buses for an extended period of time, beyond 45 minutes. Nobody traveling from Skipback right now, according to our bus company, is on a bus for more than 45 minutes. So we're not exceeding that. That's our target. So our recommendation to the board for consideration to you is really to shift fifth grade out of the elementary, our principals, our buildings, our students would appreciate the space that would afford us, and move them into an intermediate 5-6 center, where, again, I've mentioned some of what we believe would be benefits, and all seventh and eighth graders would then be hosted at East. Right now, if we project out 26, 27, just to give you a sense, that means there would be 700 students at West and about 800 at East, based upon class sizes currently. So here are some of the advantages, again, articulated. I've mentioned several of them. They're articulated here in the slides. For reference, these slides will be posted. We have thought about more STEM activities and opportunities in our elementary schools. That can be challenging to initiate in four schools and sustain. If we had our 5-6 students in one building, we do believe there could be increased extracurricular opportunities like that for our students. Now, students aren't eligible for PIAA athletics until seventh grade, so that's not a factor here. However, there are other extracurricular activities and opportunities that we did talk about, that we believe would be more feasible and attainable in a setting like this. At the heart of it is that we believe we can improve teaching and learning experiences for all students. We can improve student outcomes, and that's always a consideration. And we would enhance the efficiency and the adaptability of utilizing our building resources. Where we have space, we would use it. Where we need it, we would create it. I need to call out the challenges. A change like this doesn't come without challenges. First and foremost, change is difficult. Over the years in Perkomen Valley, the district has undergone several major changes, beginning, I'll go back to 1996, where we had the trap school, and we had students in grades five through seven. That school closed. Students in fifth grade went to elementaries. Those in sixth and seventh went to middle school East. Eighth graders were here at the high school. We had eight through 12 here at the high school. Eighth graders came out and went over to East, and we formed that eight, that six through eight middle school setting for our students. In 2004, the district constructed its second middle school, and East was divided, based upon where those boundaries fell. And again, Skipback splits, Evergreen splits, South and Schwanxville, 100%, head off to their respective middle schools, South to East, Schwanxville to West. In about 2008, we shifted students from Skipback to Schwanxville, and about 2018, we shifted students from South to Evergreen. Again, all in an effort to be able to maintain reasonable class sizes and use our buildings to the greatest degree possible, and provide students with the best programming. We recognize there will be an impact upon relationships if such a change is to occur. Siblings will be separated. There will be an impact on our home and school connections. We have organizations in our elementary schools that do an awful lot for their schools, middle schools as well. We have to think about that. And extracurricular activities, so this has been another question that's come to me. How will we afford all seventh and eighth graders opportunities if they're all in one building? We have ideas on that. There are ways that other districts have overcome such a challenge, and we have some ideas as to how that might occur. And again, a big concern is the distance to West, particularly for our South families. We have some ideas around transportation and a three-tiered system, and bringing efficiencies to ride times, to the degree it's possible. It's a longer ride for sure, but there are things that we can do to decrease the time our students are on buses and keep it under 45 minutes. And of course, if there is such a change that moves forward, there would be necessary revisions to schedules, to administrative regulations, to policies, student handbooks, those documents that guide our work. Just as a note, for the record, the task force has also been talking about the high school, and really focused on the vestibule. Is that the best it can be, or do we need to consider something different, as well as this first floor and the layout of offices and library space, with wonderings of whether or not it's what's best for students and our staff? There have also been conversations about the operations department and a dedicated space. So our little task force has talked about these things as well, however, has focused primarily on what to do to support our elementary buildings currently and offer the best possible service to our students with what we have available. So I come back to the questions for our board. Are you interested in continuing these conversations and extending them to stakeholder groups? And if so, what additional information would be helpful?
Thank you, Dr. Russell. We're good? Okay. So I will go ahead, and I can facilitate the questions. That way, there's some organization to the conversation and efficiency. I will note thanks on the part of the entire task force. I feel as though you were efficient and very deliberate in what you put together, trying to see both sides of things. And I think at this point, allowing for additional conversation, not only at the board level, but obviously at the community level, is sort of the next appropriate step in having the discussion of the pros and the cons. I know that Mr. Saylor is not here. This is a large presentation with a lot of information, but I know that we've had conversations with him about it. And then I also reached out on Sunday to the board members, just because there was so much information in the memo, so in full transparency. This has been on our radar for a couple of days, but I think at this point, we have more questions to ask. So with that, I'll open the floor. Mr. Fountain?
When the discussion about the realigning of grades first came about, or was first brought to the board, I was opposed to it at that point, and that opposition has not really changed. There are several issues that come up that I'm not comfortable with. First and foremost, the task force itself was developed from, solely from administrators and people at the district office. Now, while teachers, or while administrators oftentimes come up with some very, very solid ideas and some terrific plans, oftentimes, they forget that the people that are going to be putting it into effect are the teachers, the front line. I would have a lot of questions as to what the teachers actually think about this particular kind of a change. What do they think about realigning the grades? I also have some concerns, again, and you voiced them, about the logistics of transporting the kids all the way across the district, making for some extremely long bus rides. We've got a bizarre-shaped district, and it really stretches out in a lot of different directions. I think that it's something that needs to be addressed further, to make sure that we do have, if this were to continue, that we have the timeframes down as far as we possibly can. Another concern that I've got is the developmental readiness of a fifth grader moving into a different section like that. I think that the fifth graders oftentimes need that one final year of the more nurturing environment of the middle school, or excuse me, of the elementary school. Moving them into a 5-6 center and then moving them into a 7-8 center doesn't really allow a lot of time and opportunity for counselors or teachers themselves to really get to know these kids before they're ready to be moving again. I think that the one other area is that the, and you mentioned it a minute ago, the engagement of the students, what they're engaged with. Now, you had said PIAA doesn't start until seventh grade. However, right now, there are a number of athletics specifically, as well as all the other extracurricular activities. There's a number of athletics that are separated between the two schools, the middle schools. If you were to combine them, then effectively, what you theoretically would be doing is cutting the number in half of those who can actually participate in those things that may be extraordinarily important to them and to their developmental growth. So I think that the same impact would ripple through pretty much all of the activities, I think, in so many ways. So now, I have read through the report, and I did see that there are some good points to it. I mean, I think there are some advantages that I can see. However, I do strongly believe that the disadvantages far outweigh the proposed advantages, not only to our kids, but to our staff and also to our families.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Dr. Russell, do you want us to give feedback and catalog, or do you want to respond individually? What's your preference?
So it might be helpful if I'm able to respond at least a little bit, and I would invite my team here to also weigh in, if they're comfortable doing that. So I have brought So I have brought up the conversations to our staff in faculty meetings informally that these conversations are happening. And actually was pleasantly surprised by some teachers in the middle schools in particular that they appreciate the alignment, the five, six, seven, eight. Now, I haven't surveyed all teachers. They haven't all been involved yet. This is the first step. This is, this is the cart before the horse, if you will. Do we even continue these conversations? But there have been informal conversations with our staff. I think fifth grade teachers would struggle a little bit more, the little bit that I've heard. However, they've asked some really good questions in faculty meetings about the what-ifs, and we've tried to be, I've tried to be very open and honest with them about what it is we're thinking and I'm thinking at this point. In terms of transportation, we have considered, just as a possibility, a three-tiered bus system. Some districts have a three-tiered system, where you would have the levels on three different schedules. So you have elementary on one schedule. Hypothetically, in this particular arrangement, K4 would be on one schedule, 5, 6 on a second schedule, 7, 12 on a third schedule. That's a three-tiered bus system. Some districts around us have that system. It frees up buses for each tier. You have fewer students on those buses. They have shorter ride times as a result. So our bus company is currently working with another district on developing a three-tiered system. It happens to be for this very reason, a couple of years down the road. The activities piece, I mentioned to the board late today that we've actually consolidated a couple of sports between east and west because we're not getting the participation. So football, track and field, next year, field hockey. So that's a couple. That's not all of them. That still reduces activities for students, but there are ways around that that other districts have discovered. Do you have an eighth grade varsity, an eighth grade JV, a seventh grade varsity, a seventh grade JV? There are ways to work within that system to get creative, because we don't want to sacrifice opportunities for students. We know that sometimes that's why they come to school. That's really important. So our wheels have started to turn a little bit. We're not going that far down the path yet, because we're not sure we should, but that is definitely something that's come up. And then your last question was around, you had a fourth one, I think, Mr. Fountain?
The makeup, well, actually, it started out with the makeup of the task force itself because of the teacher involvement. I was talking about the activities and the athletics, also talking about the logistics, and then the developmental needs of a fifth grader, and whether or not they developmentally are ready. I feel like that they would be better served being in that slightly more nurtured environment of an elementary school.
And I think we agree with the nurturing of fifth grade, but also see that fifth and sixth graders together are developmentally very similar and that we could more effectively target their needs, meet their needs, enhance their strengths in a setting with five, six, and still nurture leadership and still prepare them for what comes next. So I would agree with those comments. They are also things that came up with us. And the task force really wasn't, you know, I've talked to Ms. White about forming an ad hoc facilities committee or task force that's a little bit more formal. We're dealing with, how are we going to schedule next year if we need to add classrooms? So we started these conversations. I've extended them to teachers and faculty meetings informally. We would like to formalize that if we get the green light to go ahead. And I'd like to hear more from teachers and parents and our community members board as well. So again, it was, it was a little bit about what makes sense to do first, and will we get a green light that the board is interested in us continuing the conversations, or actually the will of the board says, no, I don't think you should take this any further? And we would dive deeper into some of those very points that you've raised today. But I think we've touched upon most of them and feel as if the advantages to our students, fifth and sixth in particular, outweigh the disadvantages. So we would have to talk more about that.
And I think that the other side of that, that other flip side is just the opportunity for, for instance, counselors to be able to get to know these kids in a two-year timeframe before they're gone to someplace else. That, I think, and teachers as well, for that matter, and even the administrators, because that two years is like a quick in-out, and then you move into the next one.
Yeah. It would be helpful to talk to counselors. I mean, teachers typically only work with students one year, so that's not really different. But counselors is a, is a good point, and I think it would be helpful to hear their voices around how they would view this arrangement, based upon building those relationships and being able to provide the sort of support that they typically provide. Yeah.
My first thought with regard to those two things, just off the top of my head, Mr. Fountain, is, yeah, two years is, two years does go by pretty quickly. So does three, you know, because it's six, seven, eight now. So that was my first thought there. And then when you were talking about the nurturing of the students being together five, six, I guess what I'm wondering is, if you could help me understand why you feel as though there wouldn't be a different, more age-appropriate environment for five, six created in a designated building? Because in my mind, like moving five, six to west, I know that we utilize west as a middle school right now, but that's just the shell of the building. So if there were five, six going into that building, it wouldn't be a middle school anymore. It would be a, there would be an opportunity to create an environment that would really be targeted towards an age-appropriateness. Do you know what I'm saying? So that was my thought. I'm just wondering if you could help me understand what you mean by the nurturing environment part?
Well, I think that the elementary schools by nature are far more nurturing than, say, a middle school might be, or even the high school, obviously. But I think that that fifth grade is a very, very difficult transitional year for these kids, and I think that nurturing that they get at the elementary level is beneficial.
But you don't think that that could be replicated in a separate environment? One second. I just want to make sure Mr. Fountain finishes his thoughts, and then I'm going to pass it along to the...
I think anything can be replicated, given the opportunity and given the desire to replicate.
But you raise that as a concern?
I raise that as a concern.
Okay, understood. All right, I want to let some other voices, Dr. Fountain, Dr. Campley.
Well, I mean, I do have some my own things to say, but I wanted to kind of support Don, or Mr. Fountain, in what he was saying with the fifth grade. There's something about being big man on campus and being in that environment where you are going through the transition. These kids are starting to become hormonal. That's its own beast within and of itself. They're in this cocoon of environment of elementary, but they're also getting to be the models to the little guys and to have that empowerment of, I'm now the ones that can come in and put my wings on the littles and be the charge of modeling to them. And that really empowers those fifth graders and gives them that social, emotional confidence that they need before they're going off into that middle school environment where all of a sudden it's, I don't know who I am, and they start to have some of that self-doubt, and they start to go through the identity crises, and it just becomes this big hormonal mess of, who am I, what am I, and where am I going, that you get when you get to middle school. But in fifth grade, there is that kind of a part of, this is how I can figure out and have that sense of confidence before I go off to middle school. So I don't know if that's kind of a little bit of what you're speaking to, that you get to have when you're in elementary, when you are the oldest grade. And then you still have that sense of, when you're walking through the buildings, it does have that warm, you know, so you kind of still feel safe and cocooned because it's elementary, but then you also get to have that feeling of, wait, but I'm a big man on campus. So it does give you a sense internally of, of something that you don't get when you go off, and now you're back to being the small minion.
Right. I guess, I guess what I'm hearing, though, is that this would be a different envi... I guess my perception of it is that it's a different environment than that, that it's not necessarily, you wouldn't necessarily be losing the environment of nurture, because it's not a middle school.
But it's more of an internal struggle that middle schoolers go through.
And you don't think that that could just, that would just translate to the fourth grade, because that's the oldest year?
Not as easily, no.
Not as easily, okay.
Fifth grader is just, it's just a general developmental...
And it has to be fifth grade?
It's a developmental stage.
Okay.
You know, you get to a certain point, it seems to be that that kind of is when those changes start to take place.
Okay.
But I just wanted to kind of...
Support what he was saying. You see what he's saying.
I mean, I have other things I want to add.
Yeah, go ahead, since you're, since you're speaking.
So just, and again, I'll kind of stay in that vein before I say some other things. I do think the relationships is a big piece of it. I do think you need more than two years. I do find that there's something to be said when you get to know your staff. You make relationships with the people who you're buying lunch from. My kids come home and they, they know who, they have, they have made relationships with the cafeteria staff, they've made relationships with the custodians, they've made relationships with the security guards. They know the counselors, they know the administrators. It is not just about, you have your teacher for one year. They've built a culture and a safety and security with the entire building. And to come and have that within one or two years and then have it gone, I think of all age groups, it is the absolute hardest with middle school. Middle schooler kids, that is the age group of all age groups, that they need that safety sense and security the most. Middle school is your most challenging age group to teach and educate because of the social, emotional impact that they are going through with their, with the changes that they're experiencing and the, the internal struggles that they're having on the daily. They get to high school, and it's like this metamorphosis occurs, and all of a sudden they start to become human again, but they are not human in middle school. And you all laugh because you know it's true. So that's a, for me, that is a huge, huge piece of why I'm not a proponent at all of doing two separate buildings. I've seen it done at Springfield. I think it's a hot mess, the fact that they have an eighth grade building, and then they have a ninth grade building, and you're always moving. I've heard people from Methacton talk about how they're not proponents of the split. It just seems that there's just, by the time you get to know them and you feel like you've got that relationship and they feel like they have a connection, they're moving on to the next thing, and their world is constantly spinning. And it takes just one connection with one individual. My kids still talk to people from Evergreen that they connected with in second grade, and it was like whoever was their crossing guard. Like, they need that, and I have a hard time with that. The other thing, you definitely answered my questions about athletics, because I do have a hard time if they have to get to a point where they have to keep getting cut. I hate that. Some of these kids do not have parents who put them in sports prior to the ability to get it through the school system, and I feel like they're always at a disadvantage because they didn't have families that either by means or just because they didn't sign them up for whatever reason. And then they don't make the cut, and I, I would hate that we make it even harder because we have less numbers. The other thing I think of is fiscal responsibility with busing. Yes, maybe you're saying it's, it's 10 miles versus nine for skipback, but when we're busing that many, that much further, and they weren't being bused that much further before, the cost of busing is going to increase. And we were already talking, what, a month ago, about how we need to start considering budgetizing and where the funding is going, and now I'm thinking, okay, well, now we're going to be doing all this busing that is not really, it's not necessary if we don't do this type of split. I also know of families who purposely move into this area for this campus so their kids never have to go onto a bus ever. They can go to elementary, middle, and high school and never, ever set foot on a bus. And now you're going to tell them they have to take a bus and sit on a bus for a half hour just to go to the two years of one school. I really just don't think that's fair to, to families either.
Dr. Campley, if I could, I just want to comment on the busing. The busing in some very preliminary conversations could actually also be a cost savings with the efficiencies it can bring. So we need to do lots more work, but I don't want you to be thinking it's only going to be a cost increase. We actually have some conversations with STA. It could actually, it could be a cost savings, too. So lots more research to do.
So put, put the fiscal responsibility away. That was just me thinking, you know, all the different avenues.
That's your job.
My biggest thing is relationships and how it's going to impact the social, emotional well-being, and that in and of itself is enough for me to be a hard no. But I also know that there's other people in the community. I mean, we've been getting some emails, so I never think it's a bad thing to, to get input. I'd like to hear what the rest of the board feels, but I don't know that a lot of input is going to really sway me so much to make such a huge change that's going to impact so many people in potentially a really negative way.
Dr. Russell, is there any other item you want to comment on, or, okay. I'll, Dr. Sadler?
Yes. Thank you for sharing the information with us, Dr. Russell. I've really been thinking about this a lot, and I appreciate the fact that the task force came together to try to think outside of the box as it relates to potential things that may happen in the future as it relates to space and building. So I really like this idea, and yes, there are a lot of questions that I have, and there, I know there are some challenges with this, but I think it's just something that I think we should continue to pursue. There are definitely challenges, but I think there's also some, some benefits to this. And I think in your slide, you said we have to put students at the center, like it's all about what's best for our kids. And I think from an equity standpoint, it really will allow us to really support more students in a more equitable way, to meet the needs of all of our students as it relates to their academic needs, their social, emotional needs, their extracurricular needs as well. So I have a lot of questions, which I'm not going to ask all my questions right now, but I am in agreement with this, and I'll email you all of my questions, if that's okay, just to get some more information. And relationship to transportation, yes, that was a big, one of, a concern of mine as well. And thank you for sharing the distances of the farthest, distances from each school, from different, from Skipback and from, I believe, Evergreen area or south area. Thank you for sharing that information. I think another concern of mine was just the staffing piece. I was thinking a lot about staffing and how we really want to support kids. And I think a five, six building, we could really build that to be a nurturing environment for our fifth and sixth graders. I'm a big proponent of students having recess. You know, I don't think recess should stop for fifth and sixth graders, and, you know, just embedding those types of things into the schedule, I think is really important to support the students. So I think it's something that we should continue to have conversations about and definitely include some other stakeholder voices as we look further to pursue this, this route as it relates to realigning the district. So I'm a proponent of it, actually. So thank you all for sharing the information.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. That was good points there. Mr. McKinney, did you want to speak next?
I did. Dr. Russell, I appreciate you being at the podium, whatever, but I'm curious, like, of the other administrators who are here, what are some of the conversations that are being had in the buildings, like, informally, like, you know, teacher to teacher, counselor to counselor? Are you hearing things that, how people are feeling, like, not in a meeting, just kind of the, yeah, this is what I'm thinking or feeling? So anyone else can give a sense, too?
Maybe Mrs. Nissoy, yeah.
Yes, thank you so much. Speaking for Skipback, we have 540-some students, which is definitely lower than that we've had in the past. And I preface that because we are honestly running out of space. I do not have another additional classroom in case I have another fifth grade or another, another kindergarten. And on a daily basis, we are always looking for space for specific related service providers. I have eight. I have three SLPs, I have two OTs, as well as a physical therapist, and three different types of counselors that come in from an outside agency. It's like a puzzle every day of who is in where. And what I would say is, our teachers actually say, yeah, we can see why. You know, our fifth grade has some apprehension for personal reasons, but they do see it for the benefits of students. I've had individual conversations with them, but I would say, just in that informal conversations, they do see the need for this and see the benefits for our students.
Have we had conversations with Springfield and Methacton, a relationship in relevance to how their five, six buildings, seven, eight buildings are going? Like, how do, how do those teachers and administrators feel about how they have it aligned in those districts?
We haven't had conversations, but we've talked about it. Reaching out to Mr. Rizzo, Dr. Zerbi, Great Valley just shifted to a five, six, seven, eight arrangement this year.
So we're doing the opening building.
Yes, Upper Perk has that four, five center. So again, if we get a green light to continue conver... So, again, if we get a green light to continue conversations, we would like to do more research and hear from them. What were the advantages or the challenges that came with such an arrangement? Because it isn't traditional. It's not K5 or K6. It's something different. How has it served your students? So, we'll find out. We'll learn that.
Dr. Weston, do you want to take the floor?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of things to, to mention. Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to this idea at all. I think a lot of the stuff that, there's a lot of important conversation that we're having right now. I think a lot of the issues that are being raised are ones that would best be addressed by further discussion and stakeholder involvement. Teachers, uh, additional administrators, um, parents and students who are going to be affected. When you, when you open up the stakeholder conversation, you're going to be bringing a lot more people in. And, uh, you know, these, the, the, the types of things that we're talking about now, I think these are all things that you need input on from those stakeholder groups. So, I, like I say, I am not opposed to continuing the conversation with the stakeholders. Um, one thing I would like to hear more about, and Mrs. Nassoy just, just, just mentioned one of the things, um, is with regard to the challenges in, uh, my elementary school facilities. Because you're men-, you're talking about elementary schools bursting at the seams here. And I did a little quick calculation, uh, from the enrollment reports. If you look at where we are now in our elementary enrollment versus 2018, six years ago, we're down by about 350 students. And the trend, as far as I know, is going to continue, that enrollments are going to go down. So, I'm, I'm a little confused by enrollments, you know, 350 less students, but now we've got less space for them somehow. And, you know, if enrollments continue to decrease, you know, is, is the, is the problem going to sort itself out just by, you know, uh, letting, letting things happen? So, I want to hear more about that. Um, as, you know, the, the bus rides have been mentioned and that's a big concern. I live, uh, Collegeville Crossing neighborhood. I'm right by one of the furthest distances from, uh, middle school west. And sometimes when I'm, when I go out to west, it seems like it takes me forever to get there. So, I think even more about a kid on a bus who's, you know, schlepping all the way out from, from, from that area to, to west. And I want to hear more about a, the, this three-tiered system of, of transportation that will help to address that problem. I also want to know how this fits in with the conversations that I hope are continuing about school start times. Because this has been a topic that's come in and out over the last several years about set, high school and secondary schools starting later, elementary schools starting earlier. Um, I don't want that to get, you know, lost in the mix because I think that's an important conversation as well. Um, as far as developmental readiness goes, I, I think, you know, as Dr. Sadler said, I think we can make a five, a five, six center into a more nurturing place and a more comfortable place. I would, I, I asked you in an email about what scheduling would look like because we've been talking a lot about middle school schedules over the last several years. And if we go to something like this, we're going to throw all that out the window. We've got to start again from scratch. So, how do we want a five, six center to look? I would certainly, from, from my perspective, I think I would like a five, six centers' scheduling, um, to look more like an elementary school than a middle school. Um, recess, fifth and sixth graders, both having recess, sixth graders get recess again? Big thumbs up for me. I would love to see that kind of an arrangement. And it, and it is still more of a, a, uh, a, uh, a, a, an elementary-like environment. Um, I appreciate the comments that are made about lots of changes to where kids are going to school, but that's, that's happening now. And I think kids are a little bit more resilient to things like that than adults give them credit for. I know, I, I don't like to go back and say, well, when I was a kid, because that was a long time ago. We're talking 60 years ago when my school experience started. But from kindergarten through sixth grade, I went to five different schools. Lived in the same house, but went to five different schools. Because it was a time of population growth. They were building a lot of schools. They were moving programs around. I tended to go with, uh, went to, went to a lot of different schools, but I mostly stayed with the same group of kids. And I think that's where the relationships came in, is between the kids and not necessarily with the teachers and the building staff. I will admit, I didn't, I had no idea who the building staff were. I didn't know who the lunch ladies were or anything like that. But I was pretty much with the same kids all the time. And I love, one of the things I like about this is that you're going to be bringing the entire PV community together in fifth grade. You're not, you know, right now, we, we don't have the entire community to come together until ninth grade. Now, we're going to bring them all together at fifth grade. Right now, we have Evergreen and Skipback splitting after element-, after fifth grade, coming back together in ninth grade. This way, every, we, we're not splitting up any of the elementary populations. Everybody's staying together and they're all, the whole district is coming together in fifth grade. So, these are the things that, you know, that's one of the things I like about it. I think there's a lot of discussion, still needs to be had. But I think the best place to have that is in the stakeholder groups. And one thing I, more thing I would like to hear about, you said that this proposal is one of the things that the facilities task force, uh, was coming up with. I mean, this may be your preferred proposal, but I would like to hear what some of the other things were that you're, that you were talking about and why you prefer this proposal over anything else that you talked about.
Dr. Russell?
So, I want to go back to the enrollment piece because on the surface, it doesn't make logical sense that we are 350 students fewer than we were six years ago, but we are saying, hey, we're running out of space. And I want to be really respectful in how I express this and explain it, but we have more diverse students within our schools that require very specialized services that looks different today than it did in the past. So, we have some district-wide classes that we would like to continue to maintain a home for in a building and not have to shift them around. And we want to offer them the absolute best service we can with, as, as Mrs. Nassoy mentioned, the plethora of resources that come with supporting some of our students who have the most significant needs. So, so that means, forget enrollments for a minute, we're operating very differently in our buildings than we have in the past with the students we are serving and the ways in which we are serving them. And that takes more space.
Mr. McKinney, I'm so sorry that I thought that you didn't have.
Uh, Mrs. Nass-, you're going to have to wait still.
Uh, good time.
Dr. Weston, I just want to, uh, maybe clarify that I didn't share earlier. Uh, yes, 550 students. However, our, in, our enrollment or our population of our staff has increased. Um, so that might give you a little bit of a better picture. I have about 98 staff members for 540 some students. Um, so, like I said, that's related service providers, that's various counselors, that, and various teachers. So, I would say over those years, because of our diverse population, we have increased, um, our employees, our staff. Okay? And that is shared spaces. Uh, we are using a lot of, we're util-, utilizing a lot of space in various ways. We're trying to really think outside the box. But all of these various, um, providers, related providers such as your speech and your OT, they need a private space to work with students so they can, um, obviously provide that service the best to their ability for the, for the best of our students. Okay?
Yeah, that's not something that comes out in the enrollment report, so I appreciate your making the point.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Nassoy?
On the enrollment report piece, there are more students, I believe, if my memory is correct, in Skipback than at West. Is, is that accurate?
I believe that's correct today, yes.
So, that's sort of mind-blowing as well. There, you know, there's not every, 300 is maybe a number district-wide, but that's not per building. Enrollment's not going down in every building.
And, and if I just could emphasize once again, our buildings, the service we are providing looks different today than it did five years ago, eight years ago. Very different. And it requires more space. It requires more specialized resources. It requires more specialized spaces in some cases. And again, we want to offer the very best service to each and every one of our students possible.
Mr. McKinney, did you have more to add?
I, I do, Ms. White. Thank you.
Please, let's hear, let's hear.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Um, so, I, I appreciated things that, you know, my colleagues have said on the board because a number of them resonated with me today, um, just from, again, the emails and, and folks reaching out. Um, but it's interesting. Morgan, my son, who is a sophomore in college now, whatever, somebody reached out to him and asked him what he thought. So, he came to see me and then he told his sister, who she called me. Um, so, it's kind of interesting. My kids have played on travel teams and had, you know, high performance and things. So, this is a little skewed because they're playing with athletes from other districts, especially Springfield, Methacton. And whenever we're with those parents, we always ask, what's that like to have those centers? And they all seem great about it. Like, it almost seemed like they really felt there was more support in those, those settings. Um, so, that's been my experience. But again, I'm talking with parents whose kids are, are athletes and they're playing on, again, high-performance sports teams. Um, the other thing that I'm kind of curious about, and it harkens to, uh, Dr. Sadler's comments about commonalities. And I think having all fifth graders and sixth graders together, or seventh and eighth graders together, um, does, does two things. For marginalized groups or people of color, it's good to see more of you in the same setting as opposed to being one or two in a classroom. Um, so, that's a plus for me. Um, the second thing is, and my, both my kids said this, and they didn't talk about this with one another. They said that like, in their experience coming to the district, you're a Southie. You go to South, you're a Southie. And you identify as that all the way through. You get to East, you're an East kid. You know, you get to high school, you're still a Southie and an East kid. And you still have that division about West or Skipback or, you know. And I thought that was interesting. I was like, really? And they're like, yeah, like, so. And they said, and especially with the sports, they're like, you get to the high school or wherever and now you're competing with the kids for positions on one team that you've competed against for possibly three years, you know. And my kids were like, I think it'd be great if, like, you were all in the same school, got to know one another, enjoyed one another's company, formed friendships, bonds or whatever, as opposed to getting to the high school and still identifying as those, those segments, that tribalism as you were coming up through elementary and the middle school. So, so I found that, that very interesting. So, um, I just wanted to add that in. I would like to see more commonality about being a PV student as opposed to an East student, West student, Skipback student, you know, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Who else hasn't had a chance to, to share? Mr. Keener?
So, I think that, uh, most of the parents in the school district who will be affected by this, which is everybody who will have kids at the age to be affected by the split and realignment, um, will see this as a negative overall. So, just going to put that out there. Um, and, um, that's a lot of parents that don't even know that we're having this conversation and have no idea about it and we're talking about. But, but that, you know, would put their voice in. A lot of them will. Uh, we're talking about the parents of kids in elementary school and parents of kids who haven't even gotten to elementary school. Um, and I happen to be all of those people. I'm right here, you know, your worst enemy in terms of this realignment. And it's just a wonderful place that I get to be in to relate, um, you know, the concerns of the stakeholders. Because I am all the stakeholders. Um, and, uh, you know, there were other, well, there, you know, there are other stakeholders, so to speak. Uh, people from Cranberry Estates that, uh, you know, I didn't even think of quite exactly their position, you know, and how it affected them specifically. You know, it's a unique thing to think about their walk, you know, their walk to school their whole life. It's a beautiful thing. Um, and I'll try not to go on too long, but, uh, a, a short point. There are some people, just know, open your minds. There are some people that say that we should have single-room schoolhouses, you know, in every neighborhood. And you should go to the same school from, you know, when you are in kindergarten till you graduate high school. So, you should have 30 to 50 students in single schoolrooms all over the place. And that would be the, in the best interest of the students. So, that goes along with the, the lowest ride possible, uh, most efficient delivery and, and, you know, um, and, uh, transportation to and from school. Um, minimal, minimizing the rides, minimizing, you know, the gasoline, minimizing the time it takes. Um, I think most parents everywhere in the school district are going to come down on, this doesn't make that much sense. It just doesn't make that much sense to do. Um, and there's a large cohort of people who, you know, and it goes all the way up to Cranberry Estates at least. But, um, large cohort down here in Collegeville and Trap that then, uh, have to increase their travel time exponentially. And I think that 45 minutes, I mean, I have to say it. I think that 45-minute maximum bus ride is pretty much a pipe dream, you know, for a lot of the kids that are going to be getting on buses in, in Collegeville. Uh, and a lot of parents think that, um, because we drive it. We go pick our, up our kids after school, you know, either if it's on time or for a doctor's appointment, it's almost at the end of school or, you know, during a rush hour if it's from sports or, um, and, uh, you know, just to get to the high school, you know, is, it can be 30 minutes in rush hour. And, uh, to have to then drive to the other side of Schwanksville. So, just look at it that way, you know, these, all these people down here having to drive, uh, past the high school, all the way past Schwanksville to the other side of Schwanksville. And, and it's, uh, it's a hardship on a lot of parents. And it, and it's not just those parents. So, that's from the one stakeholder's perspective. But the same is true from people from, from Schwanksville. Um, or on the other side of Schwanksville, or out in Skipback, having to drive, uh, further, uh, you know, to split their kids between, um, two schools. And, and true, it doesn't pan out so much, uh, east to west as it does north to south. Um, so, and you have a big population center in the south. Um, so, I'm pretty str-, I, I don't want to say, you know, I, um, I want, well, I do want to say I'm a hard no, but I'm pretty strongly against it. I'm open-minded and I certainly can admit to some of the pros. Uh, I understand some, I'm not saying I'm, like, throwing it out the window, like, oh my, how could you ever propose this? But I, I like the idea of, um, the classes being together, you know, as units, uh, in fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth and all the way through high school, you know, and cohesive grades. But, I'll tell you what I know about that because I do know a little bit. I talk to my students about that and I have a middle schooler now. Talked to her about the kids in the middle school. She doesn't even know. Um, you know, middle schools are so big. They, they can't, they don't even get to know everybody in their grade. You know, there can be a lot of kids in East that my student doesn't get a chance to even know their name. And it's just, you know, that, that reality. So, if you, you know, double size, double the size of that class, even though they're all together, they, they just won't know that many more people in their grade at that age. And, um, yeah, and, and then, you know, the discussion just goes on and on about the benefits of, um, I mean, some of the benefits of having rivalries and things between East and West. I kind of like that. I just kind of like it. It's just the kind of thing you can like or not. Um, but a couple of things, you know, that some of my peers mentioned that I really agree with. I do, and my family really believes in, is that, um, the fifth graders will be a lot better off if they get that extra year, eh, with the younger i- in elementary school. Um, and I hadn't thought about it in all the ways that it had been expressed tonight, but I agree with all of them. Um, and I, you know, I more came at it from the point of view that, yeah, they're, it seems like fifth graders are pretty young. And, uh, to move them up to a next level with older kids is not as good for them. You know, it to, just put it in a gentle way, um, I think, you know. And then the other way to put it is it's harmful to them. Um, and, uh, you know, it's going to happen. It's going to happen to sixth, seventh, eighth graders. And, uh, they have to move, they have to grow up. They, I mean, sometime. But, uh, I think it's better for the fifth graders to stay in, developmentally in the elementary schools. Um, and, uh, other than that, um, I wanted to say one more thing that hadn't been really said tonight, but just it been mentioned right at the beginning and we all listened to it. Just to bring you back to that, bring everybody back to that and some of the points that were made. Um, some of the big realignments that happened years before, and so this is before my time, right? But maybe some people were here. Um, some of the big realignments, and there have been many more than just since 1996. But they were pushed. And I heard, though, come up again and again, again, though, those were born of necessity. And a lot of people here tonight talked about some, oh, well, let's see necessity. And the bet, the pros outweigh the cons. And, and we're not being, you know, forced one way or another by absolute necessity as- And we're not being, you know, forced one way or another by absolute necessity as whatever the school board did. They were forced in 1996 because they were closing that building, moving on, building a new building. The numbers were changing drastically, so they had to realign the grades and really figure out where the numbers were going to be, you know. But which way can we live? You know, there's not really that dire, dire push, right? I mean, we're really talking about, as, again, you said several times at the beginning, the best interest of our students. And we're all going to have a different, a lot of us are going to have different views on that. And I am not against continuing to discuss this. I mean, as you see, it's a very, it's a topic that's very interesting to me and very interesting with a lot of people. And there are a lot of people that haven't even learned about this yet who want to have an opinion, although I think that most of those parent opinions are, I mean, fortunately or fortunately or whatever, but they're going to come back negative, I think, overall. And we should also be ready for that, too, and to perhaps follow their will, you know, if that be their will. I mean, or at least give voice, give voice to their voice. But I'm not absolutely against foreclosing on this, but I'm going to, you know, talk it to death because I don't think it's a good idea for the district from a logistics point of view and from what would be in the best interest of the kids versus, you know, the burdens that'll be put on the kids by doing this. So I just, I don't think it's a great idea to push forward. And I think we can save, too. I mean, if we don't, not that I want to shut it up or shut it down and just stop it all, because, again, I'm willing to talk about it. But, you know, if we devote a lot of resources to it, we're taking those resources away from trying to make what we have better, too. So I just don't want to take, you know, too much time and energy away from the reality of what we have, because it's really working. I think it really is. And I know there are some difficulties with different populations and that we have to look at realistically. But I think we're doing a great job on that, and I think we're going to keep doing better. And if we take, you know, all that time and the money that'll be spent on busing, and time will be spent on busing, and a lot of energy, and put it into making what we have better, I think all of the kids will be better off, so. That's my position.
Mr. Keenan, thank you. Dr. Russell, did you want to comment on anything there with regard to the necessity or...
You know, the only thing that I'll say again is, to Mr. Keenan's point, that the drive, the prompting this time around is different from 1996 or 2004. It isn't about being the second fastest-growing school district in the state of Pennsylvania, which was the reality back then, and we couldn't keep up. And that's why the building projects kept coming. This, again, is for different reasons. We are, we are serving different students that are extremely diverse in our buildings with specialized needs, and the number of classrooms that host these students continues to grow. And with that comes those additional resources and the need for space. So it's a different prompting, and it's not as concrete, sequential, or clear-cut as increasing numbers. But it is something that is prompting us to have to think differently about how we host our students and provide every one of them with the best service possible.
I also noticed that timeline, which I actually thought was helpful. I never saw it broken out like that before. But what I thought it helped solidify was the experience that the school district as a community has had in evolving over time, right? Because we have people, you know, that are, you know, are lifers, right? And as we were looking at the timelines, those that graduated from PV and then some now work in PV, they've experienced and they've lived through some of these transitions. And some of them were really painful, you know, when West was built and when Schwenksville was built. I lived here when Schwenksville was built. That's when my timeline sort of started a little bit prior to that. And I understand that there can be, there's a transition period, there's a transition time of the way that it was done and the way that it will be done. But it made me realize that it is an evolution. And, you know, if it's, logistically, you know, there's only so many places to build things. If West was a little bit closer and that piece of the conversation goes away about the proximity, I don't know if that really changes, you know? If you take that element away and pretend that doesn't, pretend that doesn't exist, you know, from where I am in Skipback, I'm a West-Skipback house, right? So it takes me fourteen minutes to get to West, in the car in the morning for drop-off. It only takes me ten minutes to get to campus for high school drop-off. So it really just depends on, kind of, it's like a little bit like the lottery, like where you, just where you happen to be, on what farm your house was built on. So that's kind of how I perceive it. But those were good points, Mr. Keenan, I appreciate that.
Sure, but I'm talking about doubling that, so...
I just was saying that as a point of, as a point of conversation. That's in my circumstance, everybody's individual home circumstance obviously will be different. But in my circumstance, that's what, it gives me a context, is what I'm saying.
And, okay, and on the evolution, too, I didn't know to mention, but I go back to the single-room schoolhouse on School Street in Collegeville.
Right.
So my dad went there, and the special needs child, you know, was, it was the old times, the old days, and, you know, they were in the back generally of the room.
Right.
And that's the best they could do.
Right.
And so we've been here since then and been through it all, and to this point. And I just don't see really the extreme, you know, financial or logistical impetus to make any of these changes. I think that we can make these allowances for all of the diverse population without rearranging, realigning the entire grade structure. I just, that's what I think, so, thank you, though.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think the conversation's really important. Mr. Liggett?
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient, Mr. Liggett.
That's okay. I had the benefit of hearing everybody else's questions and some of the answers, so it's, it's actually, I enjoy being last in this one. And Rowan, I do want to get to a point that you made in this conversation here. But as I've been taking notes throughout, I will hopefully get on that. I think, I just want to applaud everybody on the board for coming to this with a reasonably open mind and not a, "We're going to shut this down." Dr. Russell, I hope you have the answer to your question number one, being, should we further this conversation? I don't see any way forward here where we don't engage further in this conversation and bring it into the different stakeholders, so that this plan will no longer be just from the administration and a top-down plan, but that we can get some buy-in from the community about different aspects of what this plan can be. The other thing I think that would be important when we do open that up is for everyone, administration, board, to be open to other ideas. Just because something is presented here tonight doesn't mean that it's the final answer. There's going to be possibly rooms to compromise and find different solutions here. And I would just, as watchwords, say, "Let us all remain open to what those could be." On the board, with its current makeup, I'm probably unique in that my children experienced one of those transition experiences that were listed here. That's actually probably what drove me to engage with the board and become a part of this service. So knowing about the transitions that children go through is a part of just my history. For the public and those that don't know it, my twins, Connor and Caroline, they were redistricted from South Elementary to Evergreen Elementary. And for those of you that were around back then, you knew I was not a big fan of that. But what I did learn, and through the support that we received from the teachers at Evergreen, like Mr. McGill that's sitting here tonight, Dr. Sax made it a very smooth transition and reached out to me constantly to make sure that my children were doing okay. And they did find a new home in Evergreen. They ended up having a wonderful experience. So even though I fought against it, they had a very positive experience. At this point, they think of themselves as Evergreen graduates. That's become their new identity. And even though I fought against that at the time, I understand the logic, and if I was on the board at the time, I probably would have voted the exact same way that the board did. Because although, as an individual, it caused challenges, it was the right decision for the district at the time. So I just want to put that history out there for those who don't know it, that this is a very personal thing for me. And I understand when we're asking parents and children to do something that they may not feel comfortable with or are highly against, I at least have some experience in that. I think the biggest thing that's going to be helpful to any transition in this is understanding the problem that we're trying to fix. When we transferred from South to Evergreen, it was clear that it was a, there was a difference in population, they needed space, it made more sense geographically, there were a lot of reasons for doing that. Understanding those reasons is important to coming to the solutions. So I think we need to clearly define the problem here, which, to me, seems to be the space at the elementary schools. The fuller of an understanding that we have about the challenges at the elementary school level and what kind of solutions we can come up with it, I think the more buy-in that we get to the solutions. Skipback, I know you guys are packed. And with the special services that are offered there, you need all the space that you have there, and you're not getting any extra thing there unless you're converting room closets. I would be interested in knowing a little bit more about the challenges at the other elementary schools, because we're talking about a district-wide solution. So I think we need to understand the district-wide elementary school issues and make clear why it is we need these additional classrooms or what the vision would be for these spaces, so that we're going to have a space for speech therapy, a space for additional one-to-one instruction. I think we need to understand what these problems are that we're trying to address. And the more that we know that, the better it is. Because if the solution is, if it's just that Skipback is full, that's one problem. But if it's a district-wide elementary school problem, then we do realize that we're going to have to deal with it as a district. One of the things, obviously, we're going to be packing two hundred-plus students into the existing middle schools, buildings. I'm assuming that we do have the capacity for that, but I am curious, and this is rhetorical, I don't need to know the answer right now, what kind of space do we have in the middle schools? Are we just transferring an overcrowding problem from the elementary to the middles? And I just call them middles right now because regardless of what the model will be. I am a little annoyed that this wasn't a part of the full-time kindergarten discussion. I think we should have been able to foresee this at the time and perhaps make the big grand change. I think we would have a little bit more buy-in, because right now, we know that we have the full-time kindergartens existing at the elementary schools now. And so we say, "Well, we already did this." So that's where I think identifying the problem that we have is going to be important. I agree with Dr. Weston about the, we need to keep an eye on the later start times, if that's going to be a part of this solution for the high school. That's an important thing, and I think we keep talking about it for years and nothing has been done practically. So I think that does need to be a part of the conversation. I understand the points about the decreasing enrollments and populations. The problem is, the populations of students that we have right now, we're identifying more issues, problems, and needs for their individualized education, which I believe is the actual driver of the space issue. It's not that the number of students, it's the number of challenges that we now have. Boy, I'm taking a long time, I apologize to everybody. And the last thing, I would just throw this out there, and this would be one of my solutions that's not on the table yet. I agree very much with the parts of the community that feel that it's important that they maintain their sense of community from elementary schools through to the middle. I think, I get that. They build a sense of community, they don't want to let that go, they want to build on it as they go through their school thing. So I don't think it's so much that we're magically now all part of PV. That's a cultural issue that we can handle as we go along. But that building of the community and the relationships is very important, and I think that's something that we can support right now, or relatively soon. If you run the numbers from the enrollment report and look at the populations that are in Evergreen and South, and then the populations that are in Skipback and Schwenksville, we could eliminate the middle school borderlines that we have and not split elementary schools at all. We could do that now, and the numbers are not out of bounds. Would the bus routes have to be a little different? Sure, I'm sure there's, it's not as simple as I'm saying, but we could do that even without considering the centers. We could do it with the existing middle school structure. And this would be part of my, the plan that's not on the table. If we've identified the problem is definitely the room in the elementary schools and that we need to free up space there that's going to be used for other things. One of the options besides moving to a center-based thing might be the geographic-based. Like I'm saying, Evergreen and South could share a middle school, move the fifth graders into there. It's a different model. It's not one we have talked about, but it's one that keeps the community at least together and could free up space in the elementary schools. So I'd just throw that out there as an idea.
So, Mr. Liggett, you're, I just want to make sure I understand, I always appreciate your thinking outside the box.
I didn't mention the other one.
Okay, well, I'm waiting with, that's good. More to come. But I, you know, I know that from my conversations with community, I think people would appreciate this, avoiding the division at Evergreen and Skipback, and that would be an easy fix and a nice win for our families. Are you suggesting maybe a possible solution could be to pull fifth grade out of Evergreen and South and put them into East for a five-eight structure?
I don't know if I would just say East, we may want to do it for both.
Okay.
We'd have to look at the, at more of where we need the spaces at.
But in general...
Because obviously, we know Skip, Skipback's really where we need to make the space. But yes, it would be the fifth graders from Evergreen and South would go to East, and they would continue like that. Obviously, there'd be a transition period of some sort. I don't think that we should be shifting students out of their existing middle schools to go to another, but we just rethink that territory.
You weren't suggesting, though, shifting fifth grade out of elementary into middle school and creating a five-eight structure, is that correct? Is that accurate?
Yes, that would be one of my models.
Oh, you were suggesting that.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what I wanted to confirm, okay.
Because, we have to see where, how necessary is that? If the problem that we're trying to address is the space in the middle schools, we need to look at multiple solutions for that. That would be a different model than what is being suggested by administration, but it has the advantage of maintaining the community structure as they move through the schools. I think it's important that building process, that they start in elementary, they go to a middle school... They go to a middle school. I don't see it as a division, but it's an identity that they build. It's a community that is built. It is progressive. And I think there's an advantage to being a progressive step.
What was your other, what was your other solution and then?
You didn't mention.
That you didn't mention.
No, no, that was more of a private joke. That was not a serious.
Oh.
Yeah, no, no, I don't have the magic.
He's really been noodling on this.
I don't have the magic pill.
See, all of you have been dedicating your lives to this, and here you just needed to call Bob.
I appreciate your faith in me. Thanks.
I appreciate your thinking about different opportunities, though, Bob. And I think that that, that type of conversation and devil's advocate dialogue, I think, is what would be really helpful. Because the more eyes and more questions you have raised, I think the more different angles you can come from. Let's go second touches. Dr. Campley.
I just wanted, so I like the idea of looking at alternative options. One of the things I was concerned about, like I didn't see West and Min as part of the advocate, or as part of the administrative team. Considering, no offense to Mr. Deandra or Ms. Harris, but this is their first year as middle school East principals. So it would have been nice to see West kind of chime in. But I think looking at some of those and getting their feedback as far as what they think might work at some of these alternative options. I'd be more open to alternative options than to a five, six, seven, eight split. When we hear about, you know, Skippeck bursting at the seams, my first thought and my note on my paper was, have we looked at, and when was the last time did we look at, at the boundary lines? And when have we, when have we looked to see, you know, do we need to redraw boundary lines to see where students are going? Now, would that stink if somebody had to move schools? Yes, but when we're looking at, you know, big picture, if that's what we need to do to fix a long-term issue, then maybe that's what we do versus changing a completely different culture and climate of how students are taught and putting them in these quick transition years. I honestly, if I had to choose between the two models, I would pick Mr. Leggett's model over this model. And the reason being is culturally, you have, again, the community that Mr. Leggett mentioned as far as them staying together. And you have them in a building for four years, getting to know the staff, the teachers, building that sense of community. I've seen it done. Would I prefer keeping a fifth grade in elementary? Absolutely. But there are ways to do five through eight. My district does it where they keep fifth grade in a wing into and unto themselves. And they really are kind of kept, and it's kept in an elementary kind of feel compared to the way the rest of the building is run. Eighth grade is like on the opposite side of the building and they're in a, they do something completely different. If I had to choose between the two, I would prefer a five through eight and have them be able to build and grow together than to do, to split and do two years and two years.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you. Thank you.
So at this point, I don't know if there are additional new questions we once documented for kind of an FAQ overview or if we can collectively decide whether or not we should take this to the next step and allow and put a date on the calendar for either an ad hoc or, you know, community forum or something like that. Does anyone have a strong feeling one way or the other?
Maybe more of a community forum where people can come out and speak versus taking the time of doing a
Well, the ad hoc would just allow it. I mean, that is a community forum. Committees are open to the public. It just needs, there needs to be some sort of an agenda.
Well, I'm thinking something less formal.
Initially?
Initially.
Okay, so like a town hall to gather questions?
As Mr., who was it? Somebody on that side of the room said that we didn't, so we weren't putting so much time and resource. Was it Mr. Keenan?
Yeah.
So that, you know.
To do a town hall, sort of maybe a community forum initially, and then maybe we can put, you know, a committee. Dr. Russell, what are your feelings about that?
So what I, I appreciate the question. If the board has the will to allow us to continue these conversations and consider the alternatives and the very helpful questions you posed tonight, I would suggest that we form an ad hoc committee that's comprised of board members, administration, some teacher representatives. And then we design the next step, the meetings with community stakeholders, town halls, et cetera. So that there's some organization to those, and it's not just organization that's maybe, it continues from just this administrative team. But it has some other voices that are important to hear from. But I think if we're, if we're going to continue these conversations, it would be really helpful to have an ad hoc facilities committee that operates under safety and ops.
Okay, and it doesn't have to work, it doesn't have to be one or the other. It could be both. I do think that it is helpful to have honestly, both, because I think they're two separate functions, right? One is to get the temperature of the community and let them have some input in voice about some concerns, raise questions that maybe others haven't thought of yet. Where, you know, we're just one group of nine people and, you know, administration is one, you know, one group as well. Maybe we can allow for that dialogue in a more relaxed setting. And then also work in tandem with some of the feedback and start to have it be kind of like a rolling. I don't know if that, if that seems like it makes sense.
I think that's what a committee, if we came together as a committee, we would decide. So how, how do we want to move these conversations forward? We've talked about principals as a team, actually, going to each building and sharing this similar, a similar conversation, a conversation to this one with staff from this team and to engage them. So what would a facilities task force recommend? What's, what are the logical next steps and what's the purpose of each of those steps? So that we have a very clear agenda and we're moving down a path to rule in or rule out or reconsider.
Okay, so maybe we can take January's meetings, committee meetings, to figure that out? Does that sound reasonable to everybody collectively? Okay. And just as a note, I, I do, I did notice also that there wasn't middle school representation documented. But Mr. Creedon was here this evening and I, and I know just based on circumstance that I know that they were all involved, probably, you know, in conversations with multiple admin. So I just wanted to point that out, that Mr. Creedon was, was indeed here tonight.
Yes. He has, he has participated in the conversations as well. But I can appreciate Dr. Campley mentioning.
Formalizing.
Yeah, somebody with more experience. I can appreciate that. So we can work on that. Absolutely.
Okay, so we would talk about this next in, in your view when, Dr. Russell?
So how about at the safety and ops meeting next Thursday? I'd like to confer with the team, get some feedback, lay out a project plan of sorts that we would propose and then talk about it in the safety and operations committee meeting, if that would be okay with the board.
Is everybody, is everybody okay with that? Okay.
We'll bring back some answers to some of those questions with some more data, some research, and hopefully that will help continue to move the conversations along. But I very much appreciate the opportunity for us to stand before you anyway this evening.
I appreciate all of you.
I appreciate each of them coming and participating, and the group has been extremely collaborative. Really appreciate it. And we look forward to continuing the conversations and figuring out how we can resolve the issues at hand.
Very good. So safety and operations, just for the record, is due to meet at 6:00 PM on January 23rd. I will ask that since this is a much larger conversation than just facilities, safety, and operations, that we also have a component as part of that conversation to address curricular and developmental needs as part of that dialogue, if possible. I would appreciate that. I don't want, I don't want this to, to hijack the, the education meeting, which is also due to happen. I think safety and ops in terms of breadth of topic is a good place for the conversation to happen. I just want to allow for, for the full scope of, of dialogue.
And, you know, in full disclosure, I won't be in district that day. That's my conference in Florida. So I'll work with Mr. Mitchell and maybe we can be planned to see if he can present at safety and ops. But then I agree with you, we're going to straddle both worlds, and it's important that we do that. And so we will collaborate and work together on leading that, those, those different conversations.
And, and with regards to board representation, we do have designated board representation at safety and ops. Whereas we have education of a whole with all of us around the table. So I want to make sure that everybody continues to be afforded opportunity and voice to, to weigh in as, as conversations develop.
That's a good point. And, and I appreciate calling out, it is both worlds, you know, that we're truly straddling right now as we consider next steps. So thank you.
Okay.
And thank you again for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
And then hopefully more to come, maybe a synopsis. I know you gave a couple of FAQs. Maybe we could develop based on this in the memo this week. And then obviously, community engagement, we can work with, with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about what we envision and how we might kickstart that after the safety and ops meeting. We'll run it by the committee, but we'll come with some ideas and some suggestions. So, yeah, thanks again.
Any other last thoughts?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. That was a big deal. Okay, so scrolling back up. Dr. Russell, thank you so much. Mr. Subers, solicitors report.
Yes, I would just like to confirm with the board, for those who, who aren't aware, that last Thursday on January 9th, the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky entered a memorandum opinion in order vacating the August 1, 2024 Title IX regulations. As a result of that, those regulations are no longer in effect. And we are currently working with the district administration regarding reviewing the the policies enacted on December 9th, I believe it was, of 2024 by the board. And we'll be recommending necessary changes to those policies and working with the administration in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. Board and district committee reports, we talked a little bit about upcoming. We have education of the whole meeting on the 16th. Wellness committee will meet directly before that at 6:00 PM. Safety and operations meets on January 23rd. And I think that's it for public committees. Is there anything that anybody wants to add with regard to committees? Okey-dokey. Moving on to education, Mr. McKinney, take it away. Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, why, how do I miss it every time? I'm so sorry. Approval of the consent agenda as presented. Is there, there's no motion, we're building it out.
Then you'd have to move it on the agenda. We should be voting on it now, the items that are on it.
Oh, this is only a meeting this month. Oh, golly gee. Okay, I'm so sorry. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any issue, question, comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Against? Okay, consent agenda is approved as presented. I am so sorry. Education, Mr. McKinney.
Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. We have several items on the agenda for approval tonight. So we had agreed to bring forth a additional middle-level pilot for the English Language of Arts. We'll be looking at, and Mr. Dr. Fuller will be presenting some changes to the program planning guide that was approved already, that we have some updates for, the instructional calendar and then, which is not on here. Our last item is an approval of a field trip, an international field trip. And we have the teacher here who proposed the trip in order to answer any questions that may come about. So we'll start off with a middle-level pilot. We had presented and was approved the My Perspectives pilot. And in our discussion, we thought it was necessary in order to bring forward a comparison pilot to that. The resource that was brought, that is being brought forward is Into Reading, which was reviewed by the committee. This is the parallel resource or the continuation resource of Into, I'm sorry, Into Literature. This is the resource that goes along with the current elementary program Into Reading. And so we will complete the, we will complete the My Perspectives pilot and then move into this pilot so that we have a good comparison before the end of the year in order to select the resource, considering that our current resource is going to be sunset and will not be available to us in the fall. So we're bringing this forward for district, for board consideration. We're looking at, you know, why this is important or why this is a good resource. The notion of promoting student engagement, critical thinking. We see that this is actually occurring well within the elementary program, and this is a continuation of that. The notion of diverse range of text. You know, so not just the types of text, but then when we're looking at the text and the leveling of the text and how those are working for our students. Focusing argument and evidence-based writing, when we're thinking about the skills that we're building in our students, that notion of argumentation is something that goes across the curriculum, goes across all other curricular areas. So it's important to strengthen these areas for our student considerations. But differentiate instruction for diverse learners, there are lots of resources to come along with the Into, Into Literature program that, as I said, are a continuation of what happened with Into Reading, and we see the impacts there. And the integration of digital literacy. Digital literacy is, as we know, is important. That is not something that we're walking away from, that as our students continue to engage with digital text and, and, excuse me, ways of thinking and moving within that world as we're moving into utilizing our digital assessments, both for the PSSAs and Keystone's and other assessments. It is important that our students also are very adept at utilizing these, these tools in the curricular program. So we're bringing this forward for consideration, for approval to move forward with this pilot. So are there any questions or comments around moving this forward? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Then we're going to ask Dr. Fuller to come up and talk about the changes in the program planning guide or these updates.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mitchell. This is a case of you don't know what you don't know. I feel like I was just here doing this. But after our last conversations about the program planning guide, we had some, some things surfaced that I didn't want to let go for another year. So our current seniors have a graduation project that contains a minimum of 10 hours of community service. And that's scheduled to double to 20 hours next year. When I started doing my homework and thinking about this, I couldn't find the why behind that. And, and I had assumed, like I had assumed for the rest of the guide and the rest of our graduation requirements, that this is something that had been board-approved. But we couldn't find any point where that came before the nine of you. So the completion of such a project, we think, presents an undue burden to some of our families. We know that because they're telling us at this point that when we ask them to compete, complete community service, they have a lot of other things that they're doing. We have busy kids, right? They are athletes, they are performers, they are students, they are invested in a lot, and a lot of them are. And so we had a lot of questions from parents about pathways, right? So if my student is already meeting a graduation pathway outside of the pathway that requires community service, does my student still have to do the community service? And up until now, our answer has been yes, because it's been listed as a graduation requirement. But the more we talked about this, the more we wanted to think about how can we bring our graduation project back into line with what's actually being required of us by the state at this point. The graduation project is no longer a state requirement. And we thought about the college and career readiness artifacts that our students have to accumulate and that we have to report on. And we thought that that might make a better graduation project for us because we're being asked to accumulate those by the state. If we could create some sort of digital portfolio, and I know that we'd been asked to think about what that would look like. We could use any sort of software. We can do this in Naviance, we can do it in Linkit, we can do it in Google Docs, we can do it. We can create digital portfolios on almost any platform that we own. But we thought that since the state requirement now is about college and career readiness artifacts, it would behoove us to have our students collect and reflect upon college and career readiness artifacts rather than sort of go along with the old model of communities. rather than sort of go along with the old model of community service and job shadowing. We think that we can create a situation, in fact, we already are in many situations, creating a situation where we have people coming in and talking to our students about careers, less so community service opportunities through the curriculum, but I feel like that's something that we could certainly talk about developing within our classes and make that a part of what we regularly do. I don't see a need, and we don't really see a need, to include it as an extra level of requirement for our graduating seniors, for every one of our graduating seniors at this point. One of the things that it let us do is to bank community service hours in the event that students were unable to graduate by keystones or some of the other, or the cut-score pathway. And so, you know, by doing this, we did accumulate a bank of community service hours for each of our students so that we could then shift to a different pathway pretty fluidly. But that strikes me as a one-size-fits-all approach, and I'm not convinced that we need to do that for every one of our graduating seniors and to bank those hours when most of our students will graduate on their Keystone scores or their cut-score scores. So in the 2024-2025 school year, the vast majority of our students have already accumulated all of the hours that they need to accumulate. They did it because we told them to, and they, all but about 25 seniors have already accumulated those hours. So I'm not proposing a shift to this year's graduation project because I want to honor the work that those students have already done. I think we can get those 25 seniors, all of the community service they need, right here at school or find them opportunities outside of school, we have a college and career counselor who's good at that. And so we will not change the requirements of the graduation project for this year. We are proposing to drop the job shadowing and/or community service requirement of the graduation project and instead move it to a digital portfolio of eight artifacts per student that the student would get some ownership over and some choice around what they decide to include and reflect upon at the end of their schooling, that they would accumulate into a digital portfolio and then share, and it would be evaluated by the teachers, the faculty of the high school. The graduation project is currently evaluated by the faculty of the high school, it would just look different. And so we're advocating an eight-item portfolio with reflection on the schooling that they've done. We would drop the video requirement and allow the portfolio and the writing to speak for itself. And will no longer be a requirement of career shadowing and volunteer experience would no longer be a requirement of the graduation project, but we would keep a list of district-approved and clearance-holding college and career volunteer opportunities that students can access in case they decide to pursue that Act 158 pathway or if they have an interest in that area. So that would be what we're requesting your approval on tonight.
Can you talk about the other piece of the portfolio? Is it a document, is it a report, what is that?
I'm sorry. The other piece of the portfolio, meaning?
It was eight pieces, say it, I guess maybe I'd miss, say it again.
So the students would look at what they've done in high school, essentially, they'd review what they have done in high school. The state has college and career readiness standards that exist across six different categories. And so what we would ask them to do is to identify artifacts from those categories that they have some ownership over, that they are proud of, that they believe speak to their attainment of those college and career readiness standards, put them into an online folder, right, and then reflect upon each of them. How does this?
Justify why it's present in the folder.
Of how it reflects their college and career readiness.
So it's not like a presentation of, it's not like a, it's not like a report summary. It's just more or less justification of the evidence.
A written justification within a portfolio of why these artifacts are included here.
Okay.
So that when I sit down with other teachers, if I'm a teacher and I sit down with other teachers, I understand why it's there, I can offer that student feedback. We'd be doing that on a March in-service day as we do now, so that would be plenty of time for students who did not pass that graduation portfolio requirement to receive feedback and act upon it so that they can then graduate in June with their cohort, with plenty of time.
And then I'll open up other questions, I know one of them, Dr. Weston, you want to say it? Go ahead.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
All right, so I was going to ask about if we eliminate the requirement of community service, how will the high school embed that within curriculum, class curriculum, to allow for experiencing that opportunity?
So that's an ongoing conversation, we do this with job shadowing now, right? I mean, that's certainly a conversation I would need to have with the faculty once this is approved, right? But we do it with job shadowing now, we have all kinds of opportunities for students to, we have work-study experience, we have our teacher-apprenticeship program, we have English courses in the 12th grade that bring in, that are attached to career opportunities, we have career speakers coming in about that, our art department brings in career speakers regularly to talk about careers in the arts. And so I think we do a nice job with that, I'd like to do community service in a similar vein.
Yeah, that is indeed one of the things that I wanted to hear more about, and I do want to hear how this is going to be looked at and it's going to be done going forward. I've always been kind of a big fan of that aspect of the graduation project, the community service aspect, because I think that's something we should be emphasizing more. If it's something that we can integrate throughout the curriculum, that's great, but I'm not sure that we do it now, and I want to make sure that the community service aspect of the high school experience doesn't get lost. The other thing I was wondering, and as we're going through the slides, you say the career shadowing or volunteer experience, and especially the career shadowing will no longer be a requirement of the graduation project, and I'm wondering, are we talking about the work experience section that most of our seniors do right at the end of the school year? Because I know that's something both of my kids very much look forward to and got a lot out of. So if you say career shadowing is no longer a requirement, I hope that's not what you're talking about, and I hope that's not going to go away.
It is not what I'm talking about. That career shadowing is something separate unto itself for our seniors. So I'm not referring to that, I'm referring to hours that they accumulate and log before December usually of their senior year that are either community service hours or career shadowing or some combination of the two that are a part of the graduation project at this point, but not that end-of-year couple of weeks that you're talking about.
I was just going to say, we typically refer to that as the senior career study, so it would be referred to just a little bit differently, and that is not anything that's being considered here.
Other comments, questions? And this would be for next school year?
Yes, then that's why it requires an approval, an addendum or an adjustment to the guide that's already been approved. All right, thank you, everybody.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mitchell, thank you, Dr. Fuller, so we'll come back to the instructional calendar. And the administration took the feedback from the board and made adjustments to the calendar, and hopefully you've had a chance to review them. The big adjustment was bringing back days of school, that week of the winter holiday break, the 22nd and the 23rd, and then adjusting when the school year would end. So we've used one day, well, that's this year, I'm sorry, but you see that we continue to have three built-in days at the end of the year. In the calendar, there's a note there about that, so we would adjust accordingly if we didn't use those, any of those three built-in days. So adding those two days of school in, the month of December, took back the end of year. Other than that, there were no changes. We did identify the date for PSAT based on the high school's realization of when they can offer those, and then the virtual days for administering keystones in the spring, when quite a few of our students at the high school participate. So it's a logistical thing.
Are there comments, questions additionally about the calendar? Okay.
I just want to say thanks on behalf of everybody that thought that there were too many days, and that if we can realign them into the summertime, that that would be better. I think that that sentiment was pervasive among parents. Not that it was every parent, but I think that really the parents appreciate that little change, you know? Even though, I mean, I understand it's big, but it's, you know, it's something little that really makes a lot of people happy.
I appreciate you sharing that, and we heard some of that feedback too, so I appreciate it.
Okay, we're looking at 4.02, motion to approve a middle-school ELA pilot as presented.
There's a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Okay, 4.03, looking for a motion to approve amendment to the 2025-26 Program Planning Guide as presented, Dr. Fuller?
So moved.
Motion and a second, any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
4.04, approval of the 2025-2026 Instructional Calendar, motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
4.05, motion to approve an international trip to Europe as, well, we knew about, but it wasn't presented.
Are you making the motion, Mr. McKinney?
I am.
Okay, excellent, is there a second? Any comments or questions? We'll put you on the list, Dr. Sadler, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
4.06 is the enrollment report, any additions, changes, comments, questions about any of that? That concludes my section.
Thank you so much, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Leggett, business, section five.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, remember I bet the under tonight, okay?
Good evening, everybody, so we'll make short use of our finance committee, the whole meeting tonight. We have a quick budgetary update, it's our second comprehensive review, I'm going to fly pretty fast through this. We have some adjustments that we made, basically to reflect the change in the certification for the employer rate of the PISers. So overall, it is a reduction in our revenues portion of $205,000. There is an offsetting reduction on the expenditure side of $410,000, so you'll see that. So that is the only revenue adjustment, unfortunately, it's a reduction. Brings us to $132,556,580. And there's a breakdown, again, between the local and the state and the federals. You have seen these before, there are no other adjustments to present at this time on the revenue side of things. Again, just keeping note of alternative revenue sources and the power of those alternative revenue sources, interest rates, real estate transfer tax, and interim real estate taxes. Those are really powerful items for us, and they help us to make our budget every year, especially the past couple of years. So we continue to keep an eye on the economy, interest rates, they impact us not just on what we borrow, but what we earn. So we're continuing to look at that number. Expenditures, total $137,986,948. And that is an increase budget year to budget year in expenditures of 3.85%. That slide has not changed. Coming to the bottom line, we have a shortfall of $5,433.68, it is slightly better than where we were at. Some of the other adjustments that we had are listed as well on the expenditure adjustments. There's the decrease for the PISers, we are adding for a kindergarten camp that we're moving forward with, and that's a $25,000 add to expenditures that was not reflected in the first equal sign. And we are adjusting our tuition object 240 down slightly to reflect actual trends. This is the result of the continued look and audit review internal that Mrs. Hurd and I do on a daily and weekly basis. We've started our long-shot breakdowns of multiple lines of our expenditures. Some of the 7,000 line items we're breaking down or summarizing, we're looking at much more in a magnifying glass than we've done in the past to see if we can stretch and really, really make these expenditures really match where we need them to be for 25-26 budget year. Moving forward, right now, that's a 6.68% increase, we don't intend to be there. We all know that we accepted the resolution at 4% as our first goal. So we still have to work and reduce expenditures, increase revenues or use of fund balances of about $2.182 million to get us down to the 4.0%. Governor's budget's coming up in the first week of February, so we haven't reflected any of those, so that's a positive. And our fund balance reserves will be ready in February when Carl Hogan comes to present our audit report. It is delayed by one month this year. Carl's company, BBD, was bought out by Witham. Why does that matter? Well, he was instantaneously thrust into a peer review from a brand-new company, so he is essentially getting reviewed on all of the previous audits to make sure that all of his work papers are in order. So he backed us up for a month. So he sends his regards, he will be here in February. Once we set that and we get the official general-purpose financial statement, then we start looking at the fund balances and the fund balance reserves that we want to use moving forward. Any questions on the budget? Again, lots of work continues behind the scenes, February's a big month for us from the perspective of the governor's budget, and then we get the chance to play in the political pool that is Harrisburg. Okay, Mr. Fabrizio, we have some quick updates to share, and Mr. Fabrizio also has his Gantt chart in the next slide. Just to bring the board up to speed, Mr. Fabrizio is here.
Good evening, everyone, so we were awarded a $190,000 grant. I was working with Carthick on this to upgrade a big chunk of our surveillance backbone, which includes a whole new platform, so we'll be moving away from Bosch and over to Genetek. It'll be a great enhancement, so we're currently working through those next steps. We're also gearing up for the big alarm panel push with our $1.1 million grant. We do have to, you know, add in $275,000, but this summer, we're running full steam ahead for Middle School East. That building will be offline for ESCO project with the UNIVENTS. We're also going to target Evergreen and Middle School West, so those three buildings will be offline this summer. So we're working through that now.
Just a note, we will be bringing forward the approval of that program in February.
These are just some of the projects we're working on with associated costs, it's just a snippet from the software I use to map out what we're doing, costs, some dollar figures in there, and some projects we're eyeing up, such as like infrastructure on the lower turf now that we have the fiber down there and things like that.
Any questions for Joe? I know it's a lot of information at this late hour, but Joe is trying to bring everybody, keep everybody up to speed on the multiple projects that we continue to work on behind the scenes.
Probably gets all hashed out in facilities, but curious as to what the retention is on the security or if you're changing it at all or keeping it the same.
So we're going to, I'm working with Carthick on that, we're going to distribute right now, we're kind of like a central repository for all our footage. We're going to do a hub-and-spoke, so we're going to have recorders at each building to kind of break up the footage and then have a management server to monitor, like a watcher to overwatch everything.
Are you coordinating with our new officers on this?
For surveillance, yes, Chief Miller is involved. We have layouts of cameras, we're lacking cameras, so... We're, we're lacking cameras, so we're working on, uh, I'll call them dead spots, and areas of need.
And you didn't say, but are you allowed to, what, what your retention is?
I think that would be a Mr. Suger's question, uh, for retention.
I mean, I just, I just wasn't sure if you were saying like, what, what, you know, how, if it's something we shouldn't, I don't know. I just thought of, maybe we shouldn't.
Yeah. Our retention policy is 14 days, but with our current storage, we have retention for over 50 days now. Our policy is 14 days, though.
Right, right, got it. And, and that's in a policy? Or not? It's just administrative?
It's administrative, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any questions? Oh, go ahead.
So, this is, um, was this the Gantt chart you meant? Okay. So this is a project-tracking sheet, so it's okay. So I just am wondering if, um, on a Gantt chart, there might be, uh, timelines of start and finish proposals.
It's on there. I cut it out. It, it got too small.
Okay. So we can talk about it at Safety and Op-, we, we got a big nugget for Safety and Ops., so I just wanted to make sure in the conversations that I've been able to have with Dr. Russell about asking for this, um, overview update, is just that some of these things, I know you mentioned about the fire panels for the summer, what else is happening over the summer, what else will happen before the beginning of the school year next year, that type of thing, um, in terms of on the horizon. I, I know that there are different priorities and need, and then things pop up that are reactionary.
Like the grease trap, the very last part.
I, I, I did notice the grease trap, but, look, it's not even that much money. So that's, that's cool. Okay. So, so that's okay. Um, that seems like important for the fire panel reason, for example. Okay, very good. So I appreciate the update. Thank you very much. Were there any other comments, questions about the open projects? Cool.
Thank you. And Ms. White, thank you again, because of the Safety and Operations Committee will, will delve into that a lot more. Okay, um, on the board agenda for approval tonight is the Montgomery County Planning Commission Enrollment Study. This is an important document for us. The last one we did was 2017. Our makeup, as we talked about earlier in the previous conversation, is a lo-, a lot different than when we were in 2017. Um, and so it's important for us to work with the Montgomery County Planning Commission to look at recent few, and future, uh, births, which we include in our own nine-year cohort survival method, but they have housing construction permits, they have all that kind of stuff. They track move-ins and move-outs of the district and the county in general. Um, and then they also can set us up with additional information associated with, uh, private charter home and cyber-school growth overall in general as well. Um, so this report is key for us as to continue to keep maximizing the uses of our facilities and our infrastructure, um, and it's a good start for us. Again, we did, the last one was 2017. It took a long time. It was actually delivered in 2018. Um, the total cost is $10,327. It's actually a little more, but they give us a little bit of a grant and a reduction of about 25 percent, so the cost is $10,327 net, and that's what we were asking for approval. Um, those funds are available through the operations budget for this year to get done. Any questions on that? Again, it's a really nice document. We have last year, or 2017's, which, uh, was actually delivered in 2018, and it is a driving for us, for us. It gives us details such as how many students come from new housing units, how many students come from apartment complexes, and it's very important as we continue on this process to look at maximizing our building facilities, um, that this is an independent review that comes with a tried and true, um, process that we can really, uh, rely on. It is essentially taking what we used to do in our own census, but we don't have our own census anymore. So, uh, this is critical information as we plan for the future. Again, that's a motion 5.02. Any questions on that? Okay. Another no-brainer. Uh, property tax rebate program, it's been going on. This is, this will be our fourth year, um, and we are recommending moving forward with it. Right now, we have, for this year, we have 27 taxpayers. Um, all told, we've refunded about three, $3,600. That's halfway through the year. That's typical. Um, so it's a little slow at this point in time. Um, so it is a, a unique program, um, that many school districts have now adopted. We got on board, uh, about four years ago, so it is, it is a positive for our taxpayer community that need a little bit of help. Any questions on that one? Okay, thank you. Um, one other item that we brought forward, um, the summary of the current grants. Mr. Fabrizio mentioned the $1.1 million infrastructure grant. He also mentioned the $190,000 PCCD school mental health grant as well. Um, and so these are our current grants that we're currently looking at, reviewing, we've been approved for, we're in various stages of purchasing or actually installation, or some of them have already been done. Um, and so we've matched that up. Total, over the past year and a half, about 18 months, $2.2 million. This money helps us to facilitate multiple different factors, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's security, safety, any of those things. It is a true, uh, blessing for us to move forward with this process. So, uh, just wanted to bring the board up to date. We are doing everything we can to facilitate our funds to make sure that we keep our facilities up and running and safe. Any questions on that? That's just a, a matter of, uh, fact. Anything else for me tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. In looking at the rest of the business section, I agree with you, Mr. Weaver. We got a bunch of no-brainers here. So, items number 5.02 through 5.05, I move.
There's a motion. Is there a second to move those?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on any items? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion's pass.
Thank you. 5.06 was already passed on consent earlier this evening, and the Grants and Donations Report is attached. That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Leggett. Mr. Keenan, payment of bills.
All right. So before you, tonight, we have ratification of bills and payroll. I make a motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you. 6.02, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report and financial statements.
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments, questions?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
That ends my-
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Very efficient. Very nice. Mr., uh, Dr. Weston, rather, professional personnel, section seven.
Uh, items 7.01 through 7.07 are all on consent, and that concludes section seven.
Beautiful. Thank you, Dr. Weston and Dr. Campley.
For personnel, items 8.01 through 8.04 are all on consent. That ends my section.
Thank you, Dr. Campley. Mr. Fountain, governance, section nine.
Um, and should be relatively simple, but I do have one question before we do that. On the policy two or 3.1 and policy 314.1, essentially, they are the same. Do we need to have both?
One is specific to staff in the 300ths, and the other is specific to students. Um, so I believe the recommendation is to have both for that reason. There is some delineation there. Very similar language, but there is delineation.
Okay. All right. So then I make a motion to hold a second reading and adopt policies as listed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any concerns or questions with allowing for the second read? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
That concludes my section.
Motion passes. Wonderful. Oh, we had a nice B-side of the meeting here.
Yes, we sure did.
Very nice. Okay, section 10, closing items. Comments from the audience. Com, comments are afforded to the audience for another three minutes, should they so desire, and I open the floor now.
Tim Jagger, Laura Frederick. Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments about, uh, Dr. Russell's thing earlier with the, the grades with the five, six, seven, eight thing. I think as Mr. Leggett had mentioned, it, I think it's, uh, really important that maybe like just to get together all the bottlenecks at all the different locations to see exactly what is needed, and I think as many others, uh, expressed the, the concerns with children and their, uh, relationships with other students. I know like my kids, when they went into high school, they're grasping onto their friends that they went into high school with. Saying you're going to do that to fifth, sixth graders, and then they're going to do it again in seventh, eighth graders, as everybody's going into one school now, so you have twice as many kids in the school. Where like when my kids went into high school, they might go in there and have like one student that they were friends with in like one class, and then they might not see anybody for the entire rest of the day. So then that's a potential to be happening, you know, going into fifth grade and then going into seventh grade again. So, I think as Mr. Leggett had proposed possibly like a fifth through eighth might be a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to 10.02, comments from board members. Does anyone on the board have anything additional to add to tonight's conversation?
Uh, pretty lighthearted. I did want to thank, uh, Barb for a snow day. I think that it, I think that it went well. I mean, we can never predict the weather, so I, I have no idea. It could be a disaster coming up, you know, just with the scheduling and whatnot, but, uh, it was so nice that the kids had a natural snow day. You know, I still have a fort in my backyard, and, uh, it was, it was really wonderful. Um, and, uh, I also wanted to give a heads up to anybody that's walking through the, um, snack aisle, you know, today or tomorrow or this week to remind you that Girl Scout cookie season is upon us. So, um, you know, put that money into, uh, maybe some cookies, and, uh, that's all I got.
Two very nice things. For the record, I asked for a snow day on Tuesday as well, by the way, but it was not afforded, the, the opportunity there. So, Mr. McKinney?
Yeah, no, I would just like to say tonight's discussion in regards to the realignment, I found very, uh, interesting, fulfilling. Um, I truly appreciate everyone's thoughts and comments. Um, and I think as we move forward, I think, again, we can show a kind of collegiality, we, we benefit the district, you know, because that's how we're supposed to act and how we're supposed to engage one another. So thank you for, um, your time, efforts, and, and considerations in that conversation.
Good. Anyone else? All right, excellent. With that, 10.03, notice a video disclaimer, and 10.04 is adjournment. We did not have an executive, uh, executive session tonight. Thank you so much. See you next month. We'll see you at committee meeting.